This is the Citu Planning Board, February 26. First item is acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I can vote.
Is Steve not coming tonight?
I don't know.
Well, you know how public transportation is these days. It's worse than awful.
We know he'll be on time on the 30th of March, isn't that what I read, I heard?
Yeah, right.
The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for a common driveway special permit. The applicant is Shamrock Realty, John Dow Trustee. Do we have a letter or do we have a?
We have a letter.
We have a motion.
They couldn't quite get all the fixes done to the plan, so they were kind of scrambling late this afternoon and say, hey, why not just request it? So they very nicely did.
Excellent. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the common driveway special permit for 529 and 530 through 531 Country Way until March 26, 2015 at 8:30 PM and to continue the time for action until April 17, 2015.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it is 529 through 531?
No.
Or is it 529 and?
Yeah.
Okay.
They used to be the chicken coops.
That's what, yeah. I was going over it in my head, I'm like, where is that, where is that?
I forget who it was that came in and wanted to explain to us that they were all habitable.
Yes.
Yeah. I was there for that. It was too funny for words. Then they wanted to turn them into condominiums.
Oh, you had an hour?
Mini condominiums. Itsy-bitsy can't swing a cat in them.
Well, that's the new trend now, is micro units for urban areas, but I don't know about Citu.
Tiny houses.
Yes.
200 square feet.
It's a big deal.
It's livable. Depends how you want to live.
Well, I mean, if I just put it to water and a sail, then it would probably be, if you think about it. I mean, that's about 200 square feet. What I'm going to suggest is that we get, the next item on the agenda is to review the economic development report. I'd like to hold off on that and then sit there and discuss the housing plan. Stephen comes, so we can get his input on the plan itself. I guess I'll start because I was the one that had to fess up that I hadn't read it last week. I guess my position right now is it's not ready for primetime.
Okay.
Right. And it's not so much the content, it's the structure of the index and all of the sub-paragraphs.
Oh.
If you look at the index, it ends up, there's a 4-1, but there's no 4-1, but there's a 4-0 and a 4-2.
Okay, I'm looking at the table of contents, I've got 4-1, 4-2, 4-3.
Seven different ones than either because they're.
Well, mine is kind of an old one, it's from July 28.
Mine was the one, I forget what it said on the top, but it was said that it had been approved, it was ready.
It was due for the 2015 one, as well, sent out to everybody.
Yeah. But there's a whole, there's a whole problem with the way, particularly in Section 4. I go from a 4.4 to a 3.6 to a 4.7 and back to a 3-something.
Okay. Let me look into that and try to figure that out.
Okay. Then the, well, the summary, what I was missing in the summary is 1.2.
Is that missing from the summary or the index?
In the summary, it was in the index. So you need, the zoning section should, we need to take a quick look at our zoning section. It's still got A sections.
I'm sorry, you said it still has eight sections?
Eight sections.
Oh, eight.
Eight isn't.
Hi, Steve. Nothing important has happened, nothing to worry about.
Well, it did snow out there.
Oh, well, that's not important, for sure.
Well, we knew when you take public transportation that you'd be on schedule, on time on the 30th.
No, no. It was online, no, it's online.
February 8.
No, 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 it's, yeah, zipped through it on the computer.
Anyway, going back to the zoning, it's got A districts instead of R districts.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, we had asked her to fix that.
And the final one that I had is, and I can summarize these for you, send you an email here. 1 to 3 refers to Section 6.0, which talks about 250 units. And I agree with the optimism of it, timing is still, is hobbled in terms of when the units will come online.
Okay, she's not talking about Oceanside Village there, was she, the 250 units?
No.
No.
Okay, can you hand me to the right page?
It's the matrix, it's almost at the end.
Okay.
The matrix, it says, here's by year.
Yeah, the Table 5F or whatever it is, Table 5. Okay, she may have left that out of this one. Okay, what she's trying to do is to meet the state requirements, so the number may not really be realistic, but for the sake of the plan, I think there's a number she has to show to get the plan accepted by the state, so that's what she's trying to do.
Okay, but it shows things coming online and on the year 2015, it won't happen in year 2015, 2015.
Okay, we already know those things won't happen? I mean, what, you know, what kinds of things?
I'd be willing to bet we're not going to end up seeing Country Way, 50 Country Way online. And yet we're taking credit for four units there.
Yeah, I think she's, you know, it's something, I understand that it's important to have these things somewhat realistic, but this particular kind of plan, I think you just have to take.
I'm not concerned about the optimism, otherwise, whether there is to be somebody for, you know, in growth, it's going to come back up and give you two units. I'm just concerned about something that's obvious, it looks to me like if I'm not going to see it 215, 2015, I'm basically 20, I'll see it 2016.
Okay, I'll see, you can change that and not lose the integrity of it.
And this is a stupid question, you can only count them when they're occupied, right? Completed and occupied, not under construction?
I think you count them when they're approved.
You can count them when they're approved, but then if you don't have, if you don't have building permits within a year, then they go off the inventory again, and then they have to be occupied within, I think it's 18 months of when they have a building permit.
So to use like the Riverway as an example, those were on, those were permitted, but they were never constructed, so then they've now, since it's been several years.
Okay, you don't mean the Riverway, you probably mean something else, because the Riverway's still under this bill, Stockbridge Landing?
No, I thought that the, the front, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought the front building had two affordable units. Maybe I'm wrong there, but I thought that was the case.
You're right, I thought you were talking about the ones that weren't built.
No, the commercial and the front building.
Yeah, that one's not on because nothing happened within a year when it was approved.
Okay, but like we did, I guess, I'm just saying, to figure this out, we did at one point count two units and then we had to remove that.
Well, we, if we'd been very, very optimistic about the millions of units being built, we could have put those in, but there's a lot of paperwork, you need a.
There's 200 units.
You need to give them the marketing plan, you need to give them the, there's a local nomination of the units that you have to do, and you have to give them those, and if the building isn't even, you know, isn't even built, you can't really get there.
Well, I guess, that's what I'm understanding Bill's saying, is that those might be, you know, in process quite a bit, like those four units.
Oh, you got 50 Country Way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think nobody really knows.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you got. It's up for sale right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had a couple of phone calls, wanted to know if it's going to be approved.
Really? That seems, that seems like not right. What's the word I'm looking for? A little shady.
I don't know about that. If you want to know, you call up. I can't tell you whether it is or isn't, but anyway, going back to, if you go back and you look at that matrix and make sure that it's, as they say, I'm not as concerned about the optimism as I am the timing.
Okay. One other thing that I wanted to bring up in connection with the housing production plan is when I was talking with the people at the state about the 40R, they want to see a recommendation for the 40R in here, if they're going to approve it, and they're really, it really isn't exactly in there, so I think there should be something in there, and now the EDC is talking about exploring 40R for North Citu, so it's a little hard to know what to put in there, but I think if you, maybe you put them both in there potentially.
Well, year four, they say 40R and Green Bush Development.
That's not the, we're on the.
They have it on the table, but I'm talking about, is that on the table?
Production program, yeah.
They don't really have anything in the text, and the state seemed to want a little bit more in the text, and I don't think it would hurt to put something in there, so.
It's not going to go out there tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you for bringing all those things up.
Yeah. It makes me feel better, but I ended up, I totally missed it the first time around, and it wasn't like it was just a little thing, it was a zillion pages.
Yeah. Well, sometimes I notice when you have like a numbering system from one computer to the next, it can get totally screwed up and do very strange things.
It looks to me like it was more like this.
Yeah.
Things happen.
You're talking about the six.
Question, Laura.
It's rampant.
Probably ought to know this, but the development off of Booth Hill Road is going to be rental if it goes forward.
That's what they're saying.
The big 40B.
Yeah.
And there's a certain percentage that you have to have as affordable housing in order to qualify for the 40B, and then is there, there's a slightly higher percentage that if you meet that, the entire number of units qualifies as affordable? Is that true?
No, the 25% will make the whole thing qualify if it's rental.
Okay.
So if it really does go rental, it would be, you know, 224 units that would qualify.
And they would all count against our number of affordable units for the town?
When they're built and occupied, they would permanently count, when they're permitted, they're going to count for a year, and then if they're, you know, only the ones where they're building permits.
Understood, understood, yeah. But I mean, that's the kind of thing that would obviously be a quantum leap towards achieving our goal. It's not dribbling in with two or three units here and two or three units there.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would be huge.
Yeah, okay, interesting. But only if it's rental, not if it's for sale?
If it's for sale, you could count 50, whatever, 25% of 224, 56, I guess.
Okay, yeah, but only the ones that actually are.
Which is still something.
Yeah, okay. Good, thanks.
It's 15% of our shortfall.
Yeah, 15% of 10%, which is a little percent. Speaking of housing, I'm wondering what the planning board's interests might be as far as inclusionary zoning. It's one of the things that's recommended here, Marshfield is doing it, they seem to have it tied to like an incentive for the developer to get a little bit of extra density if they, if they do the inclusionary, so I'm just wondering if, you know, we should.
Like a bisex, get one for you, something like that?
Something like that, yeah. Yeah.
Can you describe it in a little bit more detail?
I have to really investigate it, but I'm just wondering if it's something you all want me to investigate, maybe for, not obviously for this town meeting, but maybe for next year?
Would it apply only to multifamily, like apartments? Is that primarily, what does it use for?
You've already have it for the multifamily, you have a village business overlay district, and, you know, that's one of the main ways that you can do multifamily in Citu, so you have that, but it would be for subdivisions, just regular developments of, say, 10 lots or more, I mean, you would set some kind of a threshold for it, probably, but that way you get affordability kind of dispersed throughout the town instead of just concentrated in, you know, certain areas.
So you're saying if it was a 10-lot subdivision, they could have 11 if one of them was affordable or something?
It's something like that, I want to look and see how Marshfield is doing it.
We talked about this a couple, three years ago.
Yeah.
Very similar.
Yeah.
And also, there's a possibility of doing it off-site, I believe, that you could.
Well, you can do it that way, I mean, that's a different, you know, different thing, but you can, you can work, put that into the bylaw if you want to.
Yeah.
I think one of the developers who was very active in Citu had kind of talked everyone out of that, so I think, you know, to go forward with it, you have to take into account that not everyone's going to be jumping for joy about it, but for some people, it probably won't make a big difference in their profitability.
Now, you'd almost have to incentivize it a little bit more than allowing 11 units on an otherwise 10-unit, in an otherwise 10-unit subdivision with one of them being affordable, it would have to be more like you'd allow 12 units in that subdivision with one of them being affordable, so that I'd get an additional market unit to sell.
Yeah, that might be really.
But in fact, it takes, if it's a traditional subdivision, it takes a standard building lot, so you're giving up two building lots, or you'd have to come up with another building lot to get your affordable house.
You'd have to have something like the flexible open space development that would allow smaller lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because otherwise.
It'd be by special permit and.
Right, yeah.
So.
Theoretically, why would anyone be opposed? I'm just curious, because it's an option, right? It's not like you're forcing them, per se.
Well, people get nervous about affordability, and people think of the people that buy those properties as being, you know, somebody that they don't want to live next to.
Right. It's so funny, because I remember, I think last, or two weeks ago, when she's saying that the affordability threshold for Citu was like 80,000?
Yeah, something like that.
Gosh, that 80,000, and they're really poor. I don't want to live next to a person only making 80,000, gee.
Unfortunately, affordability, an affordable unit, people for whatever reason still think of Section 8 housing.
Yeah.
They have yet to give up on the fact that, you know, it's Section 8.
Right.
Yeah, and that's truly unfortunate, and I think that speaks to more education to, I mean, look at Kent Village, low and moderate income housing, place is beautiful, do they have their issues? Just like every other neighborhood has its issues, but it seems to have been well-maintained and looks lovely. I mean, it is what it is.
It's got beautiful landscaping.
It's very inviting, so it can work, and it doesn't necessarily, it's not Section 8 housing, there's affordable units down at where Kum Shu used to be, Palata's Building, affordable units in there, affordable units at Fairway Village. They're dispersed around, and, no, there were even affordable units at the Taj in Boston in those condos, and nobody knows where they are.
Well, and I just think it's, making people realize what that means in the sense that it's a, I believe it was a family making 85,000 or a primary breadwinner, or whatever they called it, it was, it's still a lot of money, you know, in the sense it's like they're not, you know, working minimum wage at even McDonald's, whatever.
But, you know, the problem arises because they don't have a down payment, and if they want to go in to rent something, you need first, last, and a security, and let's say the rent is fair market or whatever, it's, let's say it's $2,000, you've got to come up with $6,000 in order to get into that rental. And that's a real issue for a lot of people, whether, or, it's a lot of money, whether you're making 80,000 or 40,000 or whatever, it's a lot of money to come.
It's predicated on an 80/20, that's predicated on having 20% down, that's the way the thing's written.
So.
For buying.
For buying.
Yeah, they don't, it's not a 5% down or any kind of deal like that.
And a security deposit's not unusual for apartments, so.
No, that's pretty standard.
Pretty standard.
It's very expensive.
So do people think it would be a good idea for me to look into this a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
I'm not educated, at least, I don't know that much about it, so.
I do remember, I think as Bob said, that we did talk about this two or three years ago, I'd prefer to know why we, what brought it up or what the context was, basically, but.
Pretty much the housing plan.
Yeah, I think it was the housing plan, I don't know that there was enough of an incentive.
This is a grandfather day?
And there was a, yeah, there was some opposition to it from the.
I don't think I remember that.
If he sees the shadow.
But again, just so I understand, it would be an option, not a requirement, like we're not forcing people.
It's not an option, it's a requirement.
Well, no, it could be either, it could be either one.
But most of the towns haven't had it as a requirement, that's why people are.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
But I don't think we're necessarily going to go in that direction, because the developers are really opposed to that, and there's going to be all kinds of flack about doing that, and I just, I just don't think that's necessarily the best way to do it.
Well, this makes me think about, like, when we had the discussions about the 40R, that it was another overlay, and the, for instance, even the village business overlay, well, it's an overlay, so that you have the option of doing the underlying zoning, or if we were to potentially go forward with the 40R, we were saying that might be an option, or the option with the village district, so I mean, I guess I was thinking at this that this could be some like an overlay, inclusionary zoning, I don't know if that works that way.
Well, I think that's going to make it very complicated, but when we did it before, if I remember correctly, we did it as a requirement with like the 10th unit for every tenant, development had to be affordable, and all the developers were kicking and screaming, and, you know, having gone through the permitting workshop and some things like that this year that are new and innovative, there's a little different attitude about new development that I think kind of, you know, is part of the atmosphere of Town Hall, and I'm not saying that's necessarily got to be, you know, everybody's attitude, but rather than imposing additional costs, it's more that we should be providing options that are attractive, that kind of get people to do what we want them to do, so.
Well, I guess I was thinking, like, what I heard Bob was saying is that, let's use the example of the 10-lot subdivision, is that if I could, through a flexible open space, let's say I can have a 10-lot subdivision, and I, as a developer in town, and I can do that, and, you know, I've got the acreage and all that, it's going to be great, but if I were then allowed through this inclusionary zoning process to put 12 lots instead in the exact same space, but two of those, or one of them would have to be affordable according to, like, just the proposal, that gives me an incentive to do the affordable, but I don't have to, I guess is what I was, I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, well, I think.
Well, the real issue is what are we trying to accomplish, right? If we're trying to get more affordable housing in Citu, then you want to develop, you know, motivations to build affordable housing, not motivations that make it an option that won't ever be exercised, right? Because then it's a waste of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as a developer, if it's an option for me to do one affordable and get, I now get an extra lot that I can sell at full price, that seems to be an incentive, I mean, just as using that as an example, like what Bob was saying.
Yeah, it may or may not be, you know.
Yeah, you'd have to look at the bar of life.
Make smaller houses, and, you know, maybe that's.
I mean, I'd like to look around the state and see what other towns are doing, because.
Yeah, I think at this point, we need more information.
Yeah, I think to give, you know, to give a developer a whole extra lot is a big incentive, and maybe there's something, something, some other incentive that's not going to upset the whole neighborhood, because that's another, you know, that's another thing.
I'm betting it's going to be needing to, it's going to need to be something significant like that.
Yeah, otherwise it won't be exercised.
No, it'll never be exercised, but the other thing that I'm thinking of, and I'm sure there's a way around this too, because it must be fairly universal that the system works this way, is that developer is very often not the builder.
Yeah.
So now you've got another layer of persons and companies coming in to build the homes, a subdivision may not be built out, is seldom built out by a single builder, so now who gets to build the affordable house and who gets to build the extra, you know what I'm saying? I'm sure it can be worked out, but it's not, it's not, you know, it's not dead easy.
Not as easy as like an apartment complex that would all be built at once.
Right, right, exactly.
Exactly.
Well, I should, I think, ask you all, because it's a good point, if you really want to get a lot of affordable housing, I mean, you could probably, by rights, require one unit out of every 10 to be affordable, but, you know, you would run into a lot of pushback.
Whether it's required or whether it's incentivized, it still has the same problem, who's.
Pushback's the same.
Yeah.
Nine-lot subdivisions.
Who ends up getting stuck with having to build and sell the affordable unit in a case where a subdivision is built out by three or four different builders?
Well, I mean, I think they would, they would just have to work that out among themselves. I mean, they really would.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been tackled.
And maybe what you're saying is, if it's going to be that difficult, then just impose the requirement and make everybody build one affordable, but I think if you're going to do that, you have to be prepared to really fight for it, because you're going to run into opposition for it, you know, to it.
You also have to ensure that the affordable unit is comparable to the other unit, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
That's part of the regulation, actually, you have to do that. You can change the interior finishes, the quality of the cabinets, a few things like that, very specifically in the regs, but the outside's got to be comparable, so, yeah, that's.
I mean, it seems like you get everyone to chip in on, you know, whatever the loss is, or, you know, to make it up on that unit, and whoever's building it should.
Yeah, one thing that occurs to me is that you make the affordable lot, you price that lot such that whoever ends up building the house on that lot can make, can price it as an affordable unit and still make essentially a decent profit, because he's, that person has bought the lot for much less than market.
Yeah.
So that allows the developer to kind of control what we're talking about, and so that might work.
Yeah, I'm sure there are ways to get it to work.
We just find out what they're trying to do or what they're doing elsewhere.
Yes, exactly.
Now, you said, just curious, that Marshfield was looking at this, do you know specifically how they're tackling it, like what areas or?
They had it through the whole town, and now they're only doing it in the large lot zoning districts. They're proposing at this coming town meeting to change it, so it won't be available through the whole town, which I think may also make a lot of sense, because.
So they're eliminating inclusionary zoning then?
They're eliminating it where they have like, something like our R3, I believe that's what they're doing, they're taking it out of some zoning districts and they're leaving it in other zoning districts, and then they're making some other changes to it that I don't really understand, because I haven't read the whole thing yet.
Well, that's probably the first place to go, is just to get the facts, right?
Yeah, I think.
Two examples, one is that they put it out there, they intend to modify it to make it work.
Yeah.
But I think in general, it's certainly something that's worthwhile to look at, and how other towns similar to Citu have implemented it.
Okay.
Like, I'm just curious, do you think, does Cohasset have anything like that? I can imagine probably no, but.
Well, I don't know, I doubt it.
Yeah.
I mean, they've got such, you know, a small amount of land to work with, that it probably, you know, wouldn't do that much for them.
Anyway, okay.
And then they did have a bylaw that says if you raise or reconstruct, it has to be affordable.
Good luck.
You know, I was actually, there was an article in the paper about certain, what was it, Wellesley and I think Newton, they're having a big problem with teardowns, you know, because it's so expensive in those cities, and that, you know, they're building these gigantic homes on the same.
Oh, sure, it's happening everywhere.
It's happened here.
Yes.
Look at Cedar Point.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
Look at Cedar Point.
But I think in that particular case, I think it was more prevalent in some of those towns that were closer to Boston.
Yeah. You know, one thing that occurred to me, thinking about this, the town just auctioned off a house or is about to auction off a house that was taken for tax, tax liens.
It's been auctioned, it's done.
Yeah. It would be an interesting look to see if policy could be such that a house in that situation could be turned into an affordable unit, not by the town, but sold in such a way that, and with, you know, guaranteed. and, and with, with, you know, guarantees in place, that it would become an affordable unit after it was renovated.
That's one of the recommendations of the housing plan.
Okay.
But...
I should've read it over there.
No, well, it just happens to, I mean, there are a lot of recommendations in it, but...
I didn't remember that.
Those, those houses are, you know, traditionally, Situate has just auctioned them off and been really, you know, happy to get that little bit of cash flow because they, they always need it. So it's kind of a...
How often do they auction off a house?
Um, maybe once every two years or so.
Yeah, it's not a lot, but it's just such an obvious thing to do, it seems to me.
Maybe it'd be longer than two years.
Yeah.
Because I think the last one I can remember was about four years ago.
175.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the housing plan? So let's move on to economic development report.
Now, do we need to vote? Um, oh, yeah, well, do you wanna wait and get all those changes and then vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, why not wait?
Yeah.
Is there a time limit on when that has to be done? I'm just curious.
Well, it's overdue now, but, um, it would be really good to have it at least into the state before we get that Bartlett Fields development off Booth Hill Road. Because then we can, you know, play the game that you play where you get the, the year off or the two years off of the 40Bs. But we have to have the plan in place first.
Right, okay.
Okay, economic development?
So if it looks like you're gonna get it ready, just put it on the next meeting because it shouldn't be long.
So I tried to kind of summarize what all these different recommendations refer to, and maybe if you want me to sort of watch through it, what it is.
Yeah, I guess I was a little bit unsure as to what they're actually looking for. In other words, one is, do we concur with this, this is an item, and, but, then we concur with what should be done in the near term?
Um, yeah, and, you know, there are a few things in here that are a little controversial, and I think that Tricia was looking for some input on those, and then just in general. I mean, for instance, there's something about increasing the number of liquor licenses. That could be, you know, something that you could look at in, you know, a couple different ways. So I think she wanted some input from you all as kind of the board that, you know, board that's elected, that hears a lot from people, that's kind of in touch with what people want.
The pulse of Situate.
Well, yeah, something sort of like that. Um, so the first couple are just generally to do with marketing Situate and getting organized around economic development. And there's, the first one is to form this working group of the stakeholders to develop a marketing strategy. And actually, the EDC just recommended the hiring of a marketing consultant, so I, I think they, they probably have this one covered.
They don't need our opinion on this one.
Okay, and then...
It's a good idea.
Well, I was gonna say, I would definitely agree that that's a, it's a huge, it's, it's something that we definitely should do in the short term, and I don't wanna say it's easy, but it's certainly something that can be done right away, is the marketing. And I think that was one of the, you know, obviously, it's one of the top things that they came about with, even the focus groups that people talked about.
As long as it's, as long as it's focused on a marketing strategy, strategy for the overall town, and not sort of, sort of gets sidetracked into marketing for businesses, for particular businesses that are in town, should be about marketing and branding the town of Situate, and the variety of things in it, I guess.
I think that's definitely what they're talking about.
Well, and, and I hope I don't step on any toes, but I'll, I'll make it as a positive. I think the harbor business merchants have done a really good job. I mean, they've got the Facebook page, they've done the marketing, they were recently at the boat show down in Boston. And so they've really done a lot in that, that regard, and a lot of social media, which I think's been really good. So I think that, that success that they've done in the harbor needs to be taken townwide.
Yeah, I guess that was my point, is that it should be a townwide focus, not just a harbor focus, or just a Green Bush focus, or, you know, that kind of thing.
So, um...
I guess we support goal number one?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's what I'm hearing. So improved communication and coordinate marketing efforts, I mean, there's just teams on this one, more than apple pie ones.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, this targeted business recruitment program. I thought maybe this is something that they could, the EDC could use the new economic development consultant to work on, if they wanna do that.
I'm not sure what they're trying to do here.
I, I think they're talking about going out and trying to find businesses that, that were highlighted in the market study, that there's a need for, you know, maybe looking around the region and seeing where they are. I don't know if that's a good thing or, or not, or, you know, that shouldn't, if the market shouldn't just take care of that by itself.
Yeah, I have a, this document that I printed out has a little bit more detail than the bulletized list, and so they say, key opportunities identified, just like what Laura said, for full and limited service restaurants, retail, clothing, shoes, home goods, a hotel, health food store, maritime research, educational opportunities, additional recreational amenities, and residential development for smaller households.
They cover all that later on in these things, too. So I, this, this seems like it's kind of an overarching thing, but I, I don't see how you accomplish it, you know? It seems to me you're...
You have issues with, as an example, up in North Situate, what used to be Countryway Liquor evolved into three shops, and then it evolved into, and one of them is still vacant. And part of the problem is the rent that people cannot afford. I mean, you can have a wonderful business that could do all kinds of things, but they're renters, and they don't own the property.
Well, a lot of businesses are...
I understand that, but when you are renting whatever, you know, you're a startup, one of the rents up in North Situate is $5,000 a month. That's huge. That is really huge. The Severn Building, the yellow one, that just sold for $450,000. So it'll be interesting to see what ultimately this real estate and then some other service type of thing in there.
Yeah, but unless you're talking about subsidizing rents, then the market's gonna drive the rent.
Right.
If a guy has vacant space, then he's obviously not getting the rent.
I understand, I understand. But in, in that particular instance, because they have the post office, it doesn't matter. You know, they're getting a substantial rent. It's just, you know, whatever the market will bear, obviously. But I know of an instance in the harbor where somebody wanted to go in that was retail and could afford the rent, but the landlord decided that they'd let some service individual go in, which is really not what you want. You want the retail.
It's hard to really control that, though.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand.
In order to control that, you'd have to rezone the area and limit the kinds of businesses that can go in there. Otherwise, you know, a guy, as a right, can choose what he wants to...
You're right, you're absolutely right, Steve. However, I look at Pilatus Building, and it, it went from 1,000 square feet of retail space to 2,000 square feet of retails. Retail. What is retail space? What is it? What is retail? Is it service? It, it ended up being sold primarily, 90% of it, as service, and 1%, 10% of it as a few carousels of glasses. It's not what I would consider to be retail. If, so do we need to come up with, in conjunction with what we're doing, a definition of retail? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. It was a condition of approval for that project. That was the condition, that it be retail space.
I think that, you know, I've read a lot about this. I think Boston is even struggling with, like, like, banks or pharmacies. You know, like, a pharmacy is retail, but do they add a lot to the character of the neighborhood, or the street, or people walking by and so forth? So I think it's, like, like Steve said, it's difficult to zone for that.
And they provide service. I mean, a pharmacy provides service to a lot of people.
Well, and I think there's also, like...
Work and live around there and all that, so...
There's lawyers, like, if you have a storefront, is that a re, I, I see what you mean. Is that a retail storefront, you know?
Yeah, I would think you'd have to take a particular section. If there's a section of town or something like that that you want to remain open in the evening and stuff, then you have to limit the kind of professional hours where people are open at 9:00 and close at 5:00, right? Because then you have dark storefronts all over the place. But in order to do that, you'd have to, you'd actually have to zone it that way, right?
Well, I think it's really difficult in a place like a typical downtown center, as opposed to, like, the Derby Street shops, where it's owned by one developer, and they can choose to have a restaurant as opposed to a, a service firm. But, you know, where, where something like Situate has multiple...
There's a lot of T shops over there, though.
Well, and what I meant is, they have a lot more control because they are the, they own the entire entity. Whereas usually, a typical town doesn't, you know, has lots of different owners.
Right, and I guess all I'm saying is, you know, if that's really gonna be the objective, I guess we got off, off on a tangent a little bit. Recruiting businesses, which is what this thing said, right? Seems to me that that's gonna be, if you wanna recruit businesses to be in a retail section, you've gotta, you've gotta define what it means in a particular area. And I, I don't think we do it without rezoning the area.
I think you gotta rezoning.
Right, because otherwise, you're, you're sort of picking and choosing arbitrarily.
But you're also dealing with the property owners, and as you pointed out, it's up to them who they rent to.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
They own the property, and they, as long as they're within their rights, then they can do, they can rent it to, you know, whatever they wanna rent it to. And, and unless we change what's allowable in that area, sort of across the board, what's allowable, then...
Well, when we did the harbor overlay district, and it was supposed to be mixed residential and retail, we've ended up with dance studios and financial planners and, and so on. And I don't consider that to be, in my opinion, retail. So if, if we are going to do an overlay district that is residential and retail, in some instances, they suggest that, well, okay, if you want to do financial planning rather than having a storefront on the main level, you, you rub a flight. One of the biggest problems in Hingham Square in terms of parking, and parking up there is horrific, it's the real estate agents. There are so many real estate places up there, no one can find a place to park. So it's, it's all a question of interpretation and where you wanna go with it.
I think there's somewhere further on in this where, you know, looking at the zoning is gonna come up. I mean, for instance, I think pretty soon along in here, there's, there's one of these bullets on tweaking the village business overlay district, and that could be something where you, you really require more of a retail. You define retail better, and you enforce whatever your definition of retail is, if, you know, that's something that, you know, that the board thinks is worth doing. Well, I, for one...
Well, I think you'd have to legislate that, because you've already broadly defined what retail is by allowing the kind of uses that are already there, right?
Well, no, I mean, in the village business overlay district, I think you're, I, I think you're talking about a certain percentage of retail on the first floor, and the rest of it can be office. I don't have that at my fingertips, but you are talking about retail as opposed to office, unless it's not enforced. And if it's not enforced, then, you know, you might as well not even have it in the zoning. But I, I think you do have it. So anyway, but I don't think we need to get into all the detail right now, but if that's something that the board thinks is worth investigating, I think we can, you know, we can say so. And whether it's feasible or not feasible, or...
Going back to what this suggested, which is that we were gonna have some kind of targeted business recruitment program, I don't know how that works. I don't know, we send somebody out to start knocking on doors, or, I mean, what's, what is, what is that?
I guess you go talk to either, you know, I mean, I'm thinking of national chains, you know, places like Starbucks.
But who? Who does that?
The EDC, or their, their consultant would do it.
Yeah, I'm not saying this fits exactly, but, you know, you look at, there's a...
I mean, I think communities do do that. I don't know if people think that that's appropriate for Situate to do, but...
Well, when it says targeting a business recruitment program, I mean, like I said, at the boat show, there was the whole booth that Situate had. I mean, there, in that case, you're really targeting boaters, but I mean, it could be, like, opening up a business, a maritime business in Situate, you know, it's, we've got all the amenities, we've got all the, the things that you need. Something like that.
But where's the space?
Well, what, whether it works or not, I'm, I'm not really, I'm only looking at that as an example of, that's what I, you know, when Steve asked what kind of recruitment, I don't think it's necessarily knocking on doors. I think it's some kind of, like, targeted thing like that, where maybe you would have a marketing plan around maritime or something, just to use that as an example. It could be anything.
I would, I would say, what, you know, how do we know something like this has any chance of succeeding, right? I mean, it's, I look at this list, and this is a very long list, and it's taking resources from the EDC, from the town administrator, from the, it's taking resources in every single one of these, right? So it would seem to me what you wanna do is sort of focus on what are the biggest bang for the bucks here? Let's get at those. Let's put those resources in, and, you know, maybe prioritize this list a little bit. But I think, I think as you get further on here, where they're targeting and saying, okay, is there something we could do to target some kind of development and put an RFP on the street for, you know, the Widow's Walk area or something like that? Well, that might have, that's, that feels to me like a much more focused effort that has a chance of succeeding.
Yeah.
This feels to me like it's sort of...
Generic.
Throwing darts at the wall, you know?
But implicit in this thing is that you've got a plan, and I'm looking for a marine store over here, and I'm looking for another kind of store over here, or maybe an apparel store over here.
Well, I think also what this might involve is working with property owners who had vacancies, and if there were some ideas about what would succeed in the harbor, you know, what, where are the gaps? And that's what that market study was, was about. You know, there might be some potential to help people like that. But anyway, do we wanna talk about, do we wanna just kind of leave that one out because it's too generic?
I, I think we should get to things that are a little more focused of effort, because we have a limited set of, that's one thing we had to realize, we've got limited resources. And so we're only gonna be able to accomplish so much with those resources.
Okay.
Well, and I think this is, goes back to what I think Steve asked at the very beginning was, are we just supposed to be, like, saying, yeah, that's good, that's good, that's good? Or does, is Tricia, or are they looking for, like, a prioritized list, or what's our ultimate goal here?
I, I don't think we need to make a list of, you know, these 25 recommendations, and which are the highest priority, which are the lowest priority. What they already did, what Matt Smith did, was he made some short-term, long-term, ongoing. So I think that's, you know, if you disagree with what they've got there, I think that's important to say. But otherwise, I think it's just to go through in general, and if there are things that you, you don't think are worthwhile, like you were just saying,
Hmm, okay.
That's the kind of information she's looking for.
Make it, make people aware of it, okay.
Yeah. So moving on, the next one has to do with a multi-platform print and online campaign about Situate's high quality of life. And I think that's also something that the, the marketing consultant is, is already hired.
Yeah, that seems to me, just roll that up into the, sort of that whole first step, right?
Yeah. Um, these networking events, that's something that is, is already ongoing, so I didn't think that there was any, you know, real issue there at all. Updating the town website to provide more detail about economic development. Again, I think that's something that, between the marketing consultant and the economic development consultant, that is probably ongoing right now. It is a little hard sometimes navigating that website and thinking about whether it would be good to have, like, like, tabs at the top or something, and have something where you could get right into economic development instead of going through all these different boards, but...
Yeah, I would say on something like that, if you, if your marketing consultant's gonna cover that, then it should be not just about, well, it'd be nice to have this, that, and the other thing. Somebody should do it. then it should be not just about, well, it'd be nice to have this, that, and the other thing. Somebody should do it, right? That's, that's what ought to happen is, you know, forget about planning and all that kind of stuff, just go get it done, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I would do there. And, you know, it might not be perfect to start with, and you can modify it afterwards, but-
Yeah. Well, I mean, that is the same thing I think you're probably going to say for the next one about-
That's exactly what I said.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, then the next batch of these has to do with permitting, for the most part. And the first one is making this business guide or permitting guide, and that's actually one of the planning department's goals for FY16. So that's something that is already hopefully in the works. So I don't think there's, you know, a real issue with that. People seem to be pretty enthused about that. The database about the vacant retail space, the economic development consultant actually has already done that. So, you know, I think that's something that can kind of be checked off the list.
But how do you get to that? Is that something somebody has to call up and request, or is it something they can find on the website?
The committee is going to look at it, I think, and review it and approve it, and then it's just going to go on the website.
Okay.
They can put that up there at the same time they put the stuff up there about economic development on the website, and just a link, right? Somebody has to keep it up to date. That's going to be the big challenge. Who's going to do that?
Well, as long as he's there, I think he'll do it.
He who?
He, the economic development consultant who's already on board.
Yeah, but I mean, for the future, if, you know.
Well, I mean, hopefully he'll be around for, you know, a few years. So, okay.
Regardless of who, we just, there's somebody that needs to do it.
Yeah.
We need a who.
And when he goes away-
I think the who is the economic development consultant.
He won't be around forever though.
Well, he lives in Marshfield, so that makes things a little bit easier.
The real estate community ought to have a stake in this too. I mean, they're, they're, you know, trying to sell and rent commercial space. They might be enlisted to keep this website up to date, provide information.
I guess I was going to the town tax assessor, whatever he says, these are lots the town owns that are vacant. You know, I mean, why can't, why can't that just be-
That's right, but you won't get existing space in, into the data bank that way.
A commercial real estate, they don't want to-
He's just put this whole thing together. All that has to happen is it has to get like put onto the website. You know, once the committee's reviewed it and see if they like it.
Yep.
I know, as an idea, one of the things I, I'm trying to remember if I read it in the Mariner or something, but it was about the new high school over in Marshfield, they put a significant investment into like their, the cable TV and to the, to the production facilities to get the students involved. And it seemed like a really nice idea, and that would be something too, like somehow getting the students involved with marketing and websites. I mean, I don't know exactly how that would all work, but it seems like there's a lot of probably resources here for people, especially young kids. They have the, you know, the know-how with the internet-y things, you know, with the technology things. And that, just, you know, even with the Situate TV and to get that more involved on the marketing level, it seems like that might be something to explore in some way.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds interesting. I'm sure it could, it could help.
One of the things, and it just popped into my head, but the TV is, with all the storms and all the weather reports we had with this winter, I had cousins as far away from California, we saw Situate on the news, are you guys okay? And we went, yes, those streets always flood, they've been flooding for a hundred years. And so we actually went like, took pictures of where the TV reporters were and stuff, and sent them to them going, you know, we're okay, you know, that kind of thing. So I, it just popped into my head, is like I said, my cousin-
We did get a lot of press. We were on the front page of the New York Times.
We made the Vero Beach Times in Florida.
I'm not sure it's good marketing.
No, the first rule of marketing is-
Visibility.
Exactly. And especially these crazy people that are like, like Lady Gaga or whatever, it's like any bad publicity is good publicity, right?
Yeah, we're going to have kayaks ready for flooded areas and-
Got the ark under construction.
Come to Situate and be a part of reality TV.
Yeah.
So, okay, so on to identifying ways to streamline the permitting process. You know, this is, I think this is almost more of a, of a long-term one, but this could encompass things like joint meetings of the planning board and the CBA, like they do in Hingham, you know, things like that, that, that we could do to streamline permitting and make, make things quicker and easier for applicants.
Is there a sense out of this study that that's a major detractor for economic development in this town?
People are saying so. I mean, I think we have one of the fastest permitting processes as far as commercial development of any town that I've ever seen.
Because we haven't had much volume.
We haven't, I mean, with, with some exceptions. I mean, the village business-
No waiting in line.
Yeah.
You know, the village business special permit is kind of an exception to that.
I mean, I think this is a good idea for anybody who's trying to permit something in town, but I'm just wondering if this is kind of where you want to put your first level effort, you know, in terms of economic development. Just, you know, my sense has been it's, it's not the big detractor. The big, the big issue is, you know, is there a market there for, for businesses to sell into, right?
Doesn't make sense to change the process unless you get somebody trying to use it.
But it also says like review, like, and I think one of the things that we did earlier, or last year, late last year, was that, you know, Laura, that permitting process where we got everyone, we invited everyone, all the developers and other people interested. And I think that was a good way, that, so that kind of is a little bit of checkmark in that column, I think. Where we did review the permitting process, tried to like talk to people, what can be easier, how do we streamline it?
Yeah, I was, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that in the, in the balance of things that are more important and less important, how, how important is this? And I'm only cognizant of it because this thing's 17 pages long. You know, and, and all of them say EDC and town administrator, you know, it's all, all going back to the same resources, basically.
Well, I, I think that if you were going to make some changes, it would have to be kind of major changes in the process. So I see this as being more of a long-term one, more of a backburner one. Does that suit people's?
Yeah, I wouldn't put it up towards the top of my list on priority for economic development.
Okay.
Unless somebody comes back to us with some real examples of, you know, how, how obstructionist we are, or whatever it is, you know, compared to other towns or something like that.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think we are, and I think you can wind up in kind of an awkward position if you, you know, you just keep like being sort of self-critical all the time. I mean, that doesn't mean you're out there really helping people very much.
I'd rather they create the, the wayfinding signs and have something visible to see.
I think that's a really important one too.
I like that idea.
Actually, I think one of the first things I said when I was going, when I came to the planning board, is I wanted to get a sign that just said, welcome to Situate on 123, and it still hasn't happened yet. Because I feel like, I mean, yes, definitely 3A, certainly a north and south gateway to Situate. But 123 is sort of the eastern or western gateway.
Can't we censor the back of Levy Norwell?
Eastern.
No, there is not. There's no Norwell either, so you're right. It's, and I think when I talked about it, I believe Laura had mentioned that that was actually a state sign, but anyway.
But anyway, I think, I think the notion that they're creating this concept of signage that's visible in different places, I think, good. And it looks like it's tied into this marketing consultant, so.
Well, the, the marketing consultant that they're recommending, nobody has seen the cost proposal, so it's not really clear if they're going to be hired or not. But the one that the EDC is recommending does a lot of wayfinding work, and they have, you know, lots of pictures. It was that Faverman, I don't know if you saw the booklet.
That's good.
Yeah, they, they have all kinds of interesting wayfinding stuff that they were doing, so. Okay, now the next group I'm calling, growing the existing villages. So the first thing, you know, some of these are sort of the general economic development type recommendations that you saw before, like identifying priority sites for, for development. And that would be looking at private sites and just saying, well, this is, this is a good site for development, that's a good site for development. I mean, that's the kind of thing that the market usually kind of takes care of for you, but I suppose you could, you could make some recommendations along those lines if you wanted to. I don't know, if people feel the same way about this as they did about the, the other one that was similar, about attracting new business.
Yeah, I think they could, they could go hand in hand.
I mean, there, there might be some-
You can't attract them unless that you've identified the place where they can go.
Yeah, and there might be some sites that you want to develop.
Probably do that before you go out, sort of do outreach.
Yeah.
Right?
I agree.
And that also combines with some sort of posting on the website of available commercial opportunities.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Okay, these target, target area plans, I personally think is a great idea to do to get some improvements identified for the different villages, so that when someone comes in, say, under the village business overlay district, you already have some public improvements you can ask for.
I think this is what we were missing for 40R, is we wanted sort of that plan for Green Bush, and I think the same thing should happen for North Situate and for each of the village centers, you know?
Well, and I think even explaining that vision, you know, in our last meeting or two meetings ago, where people were kind of confused as to, well, gee, you know, there was the, the village business overlay district on Countryway, and now you're not recommending 40R, why are you recommending it more on the train side and not on this side, you know? I, I still think it makes sense to have it be denser on the MBTA side, if you will, or the parking lot side. But I think explaining that vision and maybe even having a-
Like a charrette.
Exactly, something like that, where people understand a little bit more.
Never mind. Spent way too much time in charrettes.
These are different.
Brainstorming.
Amen, brother.
Bopness.
Okay, so this next one I think fits in with, with the other ones, and maybe some of these can be combined, but working with the owners of these underutilized sites, I mean, I think this one really should be part of, of the one about identifying the priority sites, I mean, anyway, so. Okay, then reviewing the village business overlay district zoning and identifying potential modifications. I think this is where if you want to tweak the retail, you tweak the retail to encourage more on the first floor.
Is this where we're really talking about addressing 40R too?
Um, I think not, not yet.
40R is coming.
Well, it does talk about that here.
On page five, so.
Maybe it's just saying the same thing a little differently.
Very subtle differences between a lot of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Slam a lot of them together.
Well, you're talking about review current village business overlay district zoning, right? I mean, in this text that I have, that does, they mention 40R all over the place, so.
You're looking at the-
It has the more, yeah, it has the more-
I shrank mine down.
Exactly, this is the more detailed one. The unabridged version.
Great, so what do you have there about 40R?
Well, it just says, encourage additionally other zoning changes, including 40R and compact neighborhood zone in and around Green Bush and North Situate to allow for higher density developments could be explored. In particular, 40R smart growth zoning encourages higher density, mixed use, provides incentives to the community, blah, 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 blah. So I mean, it's, they're mentioning specifically like 40R and 40S in quite a few of these places.
Okay, okay, well-
Which I think all ties into sort of developing the area plans for the four villages, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so the next one that I have is looking at prioritizing the extension of sewer to North Situate.
That should be, I mean, I know it's not easy, but I think it should be very high priority.
Yeah.
I agree.
Shortest term.
Yeah.
There are people in North Situate, a business, property owners that are more than willing to redevelop their property. They can't do anything with it at this moment in time.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Well, and even, I didn't even realize, we were, I think we were talking about that a few meetings ago, that like Jamie's has a service, they have to pump it up, but they can't.
And it's very, very expensive, very expensive.
They talked at the last EDC meeting, you- about possibly looking at North Situate as a 40R, because even though you wouldn't get the money until sewer actually got extended, it might be another incentive up there, so it's kind of interesting.
In terms of 40R, and excuse me if I'm going back a little bit, in terms of Green Bush, and people want 40R to extend to the others onto Countryway, it seems to me that Mark was saying that, yes, we could have 40R, but we can have sub-districts within 40R to recommend more residential as opposed to business in those districts?
Yeah, you can do strictly residential.
Right, so it, it doesn't necessarily need to be commercial or mixed use. It can be straight, but more high, more highly dense residential than 40R.
That wasn't the message I was getting from the conversation. It is just my sense, and maybe I missed it, but my sense from the conversation is they sort of felt left out, and they felt like perhaps that meant that over time, the, their commercial side would be marginalized by the-
The new development over on the train side.
That's sort of what I read into all of that.
That's what the property owners were saying.
Yeah, and they were the ones here.
I know that. But also Mark Smith was saying that you can have different parcels. As an example, Fitz Mill, which is commercial at this point in time, would most likely remain that.
Yeah, but I think what they were getting at was not about different density. I mean, they were saying, well, why can't this be the same density, right, as, as everything else? And I think we need to get to that answer. I mean, it may be, in my mind, it may be appropriate to have lower density on that side, closer to the, to the public water source, you know, and, and all those other kinds of things. But I think that's what we need to get to in this 40R discussion.
But it can still be a 40R.
Yeah, yeah, with lower density.
Right.
Which is what I think Mark had up there at one point in time, but-
But they saw it as a disparity.
Right, I don't think they were looking for a residential.
No, I think they wanted the opportunity that 40R presented to be available to them.
Exactly, yeah, I think that's right. And, and, you know, all things being equal, you know, sort of the question is why not? The question is, are all things equal in those spaces, or are there other, do you put other pressures on in different places by putting more density there? You know, I don't know. I mean, we already saw on 50 Countryway how difficult it is for them to manage the stormwater there, right?
Right. But on the other hand, if you can't manage the stormwater, then you're not going to be allowed to develop, you know, to that density. You wouldn't allow somebody to not be able to manage their stormwater just to qualify them for the density allowed by a 40R.
Well, my sense though, my sense is we've left that sort of, you know, that, that, you know, drainage system there to a large degree, and what we've compromised on is the fact that it'll be better than what's there now, right? But it doesn't, does it really comply with all the stormwater requirements? I think not.
No, evidently not. No, there's some, there's some anomalies.
Anyway, not to get too far off.
Yeah, I didn't want to get, sorry about that.
The next item, items have to do with the MBTA and advocating for the permanent return of the weekend service and increasing the ridership. I mean, I think these are all good things.
I'd actually like to start with the permanent return of the weekday service.
Build on that, huh?
Oh, you mean scheduled weekday service?
Yes. There's a train missing.
Which one is it?
702. They're not running anymore.
No.
And, and coming back, there's a peak hour train that's missing as well. Hopefully that will get corrected.
I think tomorrow's the last day that is the recovery schedule.
No, it's going through-
Can I write that down?
-the 30th of March.
Did that change?
For the train, for the commuter rail.
Yeah.
It will not be totally fixed until the 30th of March.
Okay.
That was on the news tonight.
I'll let you know when it is.
Okay, 'cause I, I-
Right now, it's sort of a cattle car.
I took the train a couple times to get this, had the recovery schedule. Also, I think, does it say, so we do have the, at least temporarily, hopefully, the weekend service, and I think there were several articles that were written about also just the fact of like one later train on Fridays and Saturdays, you know, instead of like 10 o'clock, at like 11 or 11:30.
Oh, yeah.
Just so that you could, you know, it's maybe not as much for, I guess it's marketing Situate, but the fact that you could use the train to go in, see a movie or a play or something, and-
They have it on Saturday night on the weekends, and they have it on Sunday night, but not on Friday night, and they need to take that Sunday night train and make it Friday night.
Yeah, I think even though the, the later one is 11, it's still kind of early, though.
How much are they positioning, don't they need to position this train here?
At the end of the day, this is, this is probably not really high on-
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I mean, I'd love to see it, it's just, you know, we may be tilting our windmills here, you know, at some level.
Okay, the shuttle bus from the Green Bush Station to Situate Harbor, I believe that's actually being looked into right now. Again, it's something that-
By?
By Tricia. So, I guess I see this as something good to have, but maybe not like a top priority, I don't know what-
I guess the question is, you know, how would it, what kind of ridership would you really get on it, how would it be used, you know, 'cause you, you gotta be able to cover the cost for it.
Yeah.
All that, right?
Yep.
I mean, it'd be nice, it certainly would be nice for people to be able to get around, you know, via shuttle bus and stuff like that, but-
But I think in this case, they're talking about maybe only special events, like the St. Patrick's Day Parade, or the Heritage Days.
Well, they do that already.
So, just on the weekends in the summer to, you know, bring people down and-
That's what I was reading, 'cause they do those shuttle buses on the-
Yeah, they do.
On the big events.
Yeah.
Do that already.
A little more than that. So, I don't know, maybe-
Weekends in the summer would be interesting.
Middle of the road as far as a priority.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth somebody sort of flushing it out and saying, is it even feasible?
Yeah.
It would be interesting to find out if Newburyport does something similar, because I know their train station is not really very walkable to their downtown.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
And so they're kind of in a similar situation, where it was a new facility-
They also have their parking well off of the waterfront, too, right, at Newburyport, if I remember right.
Yeah, most of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they have a couple of big lots there, but-
But they're back.
Yep, but it's a bigger city.
Yeah.
Right, but I guess- Denser environment.
But in the situation with the train, it was, was also very similar to the Green Bush line, where it was redone, and so they built a parking lot, they built a new facility, they didn't build it where it was previously, they kind of put it off the-
Would there be any benefit to, and again, I'm just thinking, the, the train, and say Peggotty, I mean, if you're coming to the harbor, marketing the, the beach, I mean, the trains used to go down to Nantasket, and everyone would, you know, 100 years ago.
That's kind of what I was envisioning when they're talking, sort of weekend service, to do a little route, you know?
Take, take the train, you could go out to Peggotty, go in, go into town, and maybe Egypt, I don't know, and then back to the train station, and-
I guess if there was somewhere there to change-
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking through in my head, it's like, great, they dump you in the parking lot and there's nothing there.
Yeah.
I think I asked you this before, but that, whatever happened to the Gatra, you know, we had that whole loop.
That's the bus that they're looking, they're talking to.
Okay.
Well, one of the things, while it doesn't fit into what we're talking about at this moment in time, but somebody just brought it up, we need facilities, both in the harbor and North Situate, sanitary facilities, there are none, there are absolutely none, and if you want to draw, to draw people to these districts, Green Bush as well, where are the sanitary facilities, where can people, you can't always count on running into a business.
At the Harbor Masters-
And they hate it.
-office, you can, you can use those.
Yeah, they, they have a bathroom.
Right, but they really don't like that, but that's the way it is, too bad.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're trying to market tourism and all of that kind of stuff, you need to think about those kinds of issues as well.
Don't question.
You also need to think not just so much a trolley service or a, a jitney running people around, it's too bad we don't have a taxi service in this town.
Yeah.
Really, and it's not just about getting people from the train to the harbor or whatever, it's those of us that are getting older, you know, people who give up their cars, they don't want to just depend upon the senior shuttle, they want a taxi service to be able to call and say, "Take me."
Does anyone know, I haven't tried it, does Uber work?
I was gonna say the same thing, do you have an Uber app on your phone?
Um, no.
'Cause I know, my, my son does, so I-
I don't think, I don't think you can get them here, and I, I, you know, I think fundamentally, the issue is if there was a big enough demand for something like that, it would be here.
It would be here, right?
Right, it's just, you can't sit around for two days and get a call to, to drive something somewhere.
Unless, unless you're doing something else during that, during that time.
And that, that might be the real issue with the shuttle, too, is that there's just not enough use for it.
Okay, well, moving along, we've got kind of an old standard here, the bike paths and the walkways, and I think that's something ongoing, that's gonna be ongoing, whether it's in this plan or not, but-
Is there, is there anywhere in town you can get off the train and rent a bike?
No.
No. We've talked about that, too, as an option.
That's, that's, that's something that's, you know, seems obvious.
It would seem like it could be a seasonal business, if you had enough volume coming in from the train, trying to get to town, or to the beaches, or whatever, you know?
Right, right, or just touring around.
Widow's Walk, looking at the development opportunities, and then I think the next one is very tied to that, looking at issuing an RFP.
I would be very supportive of that.
I would, too, I think this is, I think this is a really, as-
It's a cool idea.
Yeah, as Steve said, a lot of these things, I think, are harder, not that they're wishy-washy, but they're hard to kind of wrap yourself around.
That's what they are.
Yeah, and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. This is one that's pretty clear-cut, I think, that could really have a lot of benefit.
It's also easy, straightforward to determine whether it's viable or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And is there land that's available for doing something around there?
You can take the back, you can make it a nine-hole executive course, and take nine holes off the back and put something-
I'd, I'd do that, I don't like the back nine.
I'm not saying the back died, obviously it's a eight-nine.
I like that house up on the, up there.
Let's move on to 3A, identifying parcels for, to potentially rezone for commercial use. I think there's probably some low-hanging fruit around the Cohasset Line, expanding that business districts a little bit.
I thought they did this, and they said there really wasn't much in the way of developable.
There, there really isn't, there's, there's a little bit, and that's it, so I guess so maybe this should be sort of a low priority.
The one parcel, I think, the one area that you might be able to do something with, is at the intersection of Manlot and 3A. Scar Saloni's gas station owns a tremendous, a fairly decent size.
Seventy-seven thousand square feet.
Well, it's-
No, no, I mean, that's what it is, I happen to be, have been looking at that recently, yeah.
Okay, so, but it's still-
An acre and a half, maybe?
Acre and a, acre and a half, and then you have what used to be 3A Farm across the street, you've got the animal shelter, you're going to have-
The police and fire.
The police and fire.
Kind of makes it almost like a little new center in a way.
A little bit of what have you, so, I mean, I think there's potential there.
Okay, good, great.
I agree.
Okay, now, marketing these, these large festival-type events, I don't know, do people really feel like we need a lot of marketing for those? I mean, there are always so many thousands of people.
I mean, I, I think, you know, my, my view on Heritage Days is that it's not as great a thing for the local merchants. I mean, you got a lot of the junk shops up and down the street, right?
People, people come in, yeah.
But it, it's hard for traffic to get in and out of the places there, and most of the focus is outside, not into the merchant, that's just my view, I don't, maybe Ann is more about it than I do, but-
It's double-edged sword, and as someone from the police department said, there's a certain percentage in this town who hate it, and there's a certain percentage in this town who love it. It's the same thing with the carnival.
Yep.
Same deal. As far as the merchants are concerned, one of them, a few years ago, was saying how much they hated it, and yet they turn around and email all of their clients that it was the best weekend they ever had. You can't have it both ways, you know, and many of them now are, have tents out in front of their shops, they're really working hard to get people in. Joy had, I think this past year, had one of the best weekends they've ever had. So, you know, there's a tremendous amount of traffic, there's a lot of churning, even though one day it rained. So, that Sunday, I have never, ever, ever seen so many people. But Heritage Days is in the process of changing, and it's, it went before the selectmen this past Tuesday night, I did not attend, I've chosen to step back from Heritage Days. Dr. Nico is, is basically running it now, there's gonna be two stages, there's going to be trolley service, there's going to be all kinds, he's got these really grandiose ideas, and, you know, I hope for him that, that it works.
Do you think it needs more marketing? I mean, that's really always-
They will take care of, this is a chamber-
I don't really think so.
No.
I think-
This is a chamber event, a lot of people, for whatever reason, think that it's put on by the Town of Situate. It is not put on by the Town of Situate, it is put on by the Situate Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, but I, I think the, sort of the marketing ought to be focused around a couple of things down, where they talk about shoulder season activity, right, extending the season.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I would say that's a great one to sort of focus on, is what can you do, and a good place to go look is Newport, Rhode Island, and, obviously, a much bigger place and, and all of that, but they, they started with a relatively short season, summer season, and they've expanded their season pretty dramatically, in terms of into December, right?
Mm-hmm.
And on the other side, sort of starting earlier and earlier, and so finding events to market in those, in, you know, kind of in those, whether it's Christmas or whatever, you know?
Well, and along those lines, I think it's good, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but in March, so in just a few weeks, they have a Taste of Situate, where they're gonna have the whole week and all the restaurants, many of the restaurants are participating, I think that's a great idea, you know?
Restaurant week, yeah.
Yeah, things like that.
St. Patrick's Day, of course.
Well-
Well, now, it's, that was, that's gonna be in April.
It's gonna be April 12th.
Oh, you're right, right, after the snow goes away.
I mean, I think, I guess- I'm thinking about creating destination sort of events that are on the shoulder, in the shoulder seasons, as opposed to-
Some kind of a fall, I mean, Situate has a fall festival.
Oktoberfest, or whatever it is, you know?
Thing.
But I think in the scope of this document, there are other things that are, like getting back to the, the RFP for Widow's Walk, as a much, much higher sort of priority of like things that can be done, as opposed to some of these that are a little bit more nebulous, and I think this is one of them with the marketing.
Okay, the boat charters, identifying ways to work with the charter boats to offer more excursions, I mean, I think that's, that's actually something that would be a really nice thing, that would get people down here, I mean, I think the, the water is one of the big draws that Situate has.
Absolutely, yep.
Is the boat.
You kind of, you, I mean, it's one thing to talk about it, but, you know, you kind of need somebody to take it and make it a business, right?
Yeah.
Is what you need.
Yeah.
'Cause I don't see the town sort of subsidizing those kinds of trips.
No, but I mean, like, the Lucky Finn, that's-
Yeah, I mean, he took it on, and he's doing a nice job with it.
Yeah.
The charter fishing fleet is pretty active, and, you know, has, has some decent presence on the web, if you search it out. It's similar to the one in Rock Harbor, and Rock Harbor's got some really neat stuff on, on their website, so I don't know if that's a good, good example.
I didn't know Rock Harbor had a website.
The fishing fleet, if you, if you Google, you know, charter fishing, Rock Harbor, that's-
I would do that right now, except that I don't have Wi-Fi.
How do we put Wi-Fi into?
Yeah, well-
I thought we voted to do that, didn't we?
It's down the harbor.
You can go to the GE Air Hall.
The Mossing, I'm calling it the Maritime History Museum, I know it's called the Maritime and Mossing Museum, but, yeah, whether that could be somehow expanded on, I mean, I, maybe they're limited because of the amount of space they have, but Maritime History, I think, really interests a lot of people, they have a lot of good stuff there, on shipwrecks, on the Columbia. To me, that has a much kind of broader appeal than, than Mossing does.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's like apples and oranges, but anyway, I mean, I think that's, that's a good, a good thing to think about, but maybe involves a lot of people, and I'm not sure if that can be a real high priority, or-
I think without further development in that area, it's probably gonna still be a fairly marginal situation.
I agree.
In terms of visitors and things like that, but if there-
You could put it on the map, right?
If that area ever does become developed, you know, the way we thought about with the 40R and things like that, it could be a terrific little amenity to, to the rest of the development.
Definitely want to link it to the new Widow's Walk Resort Development.
Yes, yes, exactly. Then the other thing you want to do is, is create some water opportunities there on, on Haringbrook and the North River, you know, linked into that with, with boating and fishing, and, and that, that's pretty obvious.
Yeah, I mean, they've got that nice park there with the launch ramp and-
Right, right, but I mean, if I could, if I could come down on the train, take a short walk, or maybe even a little jitney bus over there, rent a kayak, you know, go out on the North River for the day, that, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Which, by the way, like, just what you said, even like, if, coming in on the train, if you could walk across the street to where the Dunkin' Donuts is, and keep walking to the North River, which there was supposed to be a proposal for that little bridge going over Haringbrook.
Right, right, right.
That would be really nice.
Good.
Okay, the Harbor Walk, I think, is something-
It'd be nice if it was a Starbucks you could walk by.
I could just walk right by Starbucks.
Look at me tonight.
Wouldn't have to stop.
No stop.
So, the, the Harbor Walk, one of the things that I hope that, that gets considered with that is beautifying it, making it more than just asphalt.
Exactly what I just had written.
And we had talked, we talked about that, when Mark was in here, we really talked a lot about that.
The Beautification Commission raised what was basically a very good point, but the problem was it just kind of threw a wrench in the works for everything that we had planned, which was, no one really has the ability to maintain plantings in this town very well. So, because of that, that, you know, nothing went forward on that Jericho Road parking lot.
Is that phase two Jericho?
That's done.
Is that, that's as done as it's gonna get?
As it's gonna be.
So it's, it was a sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's a sidewalk.
Yeah, and it's a asphalt sidewalk, it has no bricks, it has no nothing.
No, nothing.
No signage, nothing.
Nothing, nothing, nothing.
All they had to do was run a couple of lines of brick along with the asphalt to give it some character and some, you know, it would have been so easy to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, you didn't have to do everything, but it would have been so easy.
You don't know how many conversations I had about the need for a plan.
Some kind of signature. Some kind of signature.
Not a master plan, because I know that sounds a little scary to people, but just an overall plan for that Harbor Walk with a little landscaping and with some brick and so on, it just, yeah. It was like, let's get it done, let's get it done.
We could have used.
Yeah.
Well, and, and also the signs that are along-
We have time to do it right, but now we have time to do it over.
Sounds about right.
Yep.
I, I also think the signage is really important and, like, for instance, the one, I think there's, there's two or three signs. There's the one that starts at Situate, the little brook.
Mm-hmm.
And then, those are really nice. You sit there, you read the history, you might want to walk to the next one. And I think it goes as far as the community, or not the community, the Harbor Master Building, right?
Yeah, just sort of disappears.
And then there's, there's nothing else beyond that, as far as I know.
Well, they, they did think about doing that and-
Originally, they were going to put them on Jericho Road. They were going to have a little station there.
Yeah, the Bates House, that's an obvious one.
Yeah, but I think it, it makes people-
They paved.
Want to walk to the next one. Okay, what else is there? Oh, I want to read the next sign.
All right, what is the story with-
So we're, we're on board with that.
Okay, good, good. What's the story with, down by the gazebo? With that memorial that's been there?
Well, it's, it's someone in town that's been in town for a long time that just put it there.
Did they have permission?
It's a big mystery. And I've looked into it, I've asked some questions.
And it's not finished and it's, it's unfortunate.
Or to bring the ship in and use the anchor.
Okay, so moving along to the hotels.
Well, that kind of, I think, ties into the Widows Walk thing, though.
Yeah.
I, I, I just don't see where else somebody's going to put a hotel in this town.
That's where they were originally going to put a hotel.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Where?
Widows Walk.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm saying that's, that's fine. I just, it says identify sites for potential hotel development. I, I don't know that we're, that's going to take very long.
I wonder if there's some way we could-
I mean, it's kind of the, the current one that's there in town. And then Widows Walk, I don't know where else you'd do it.
I, I'm wondering if we could some, is the way, is there a way to incentivize, bed and breakfast establishments?
Oh, God.
That's-
Airbnb?
That's, that's a way to get rooms for tourists in a very charming way, it seems to me, rather than big sort of institutionalized hotels.
We had a couple of them, one in particular up on Allen Place.
Yep, yep.
And the neighbors were so horrific.
Well-
They finally went away.
And we've got to have a-
But every time we've had relatives come into town, that's where they stayed.
Oh, yeah.
Enjoyable experience.
Me too, and they loved it.
Yep.
They loved it. And then the Gilmore's packed it in because the people out back made, just on hyperheats, made it almost untenable. No matter what they wanted to do, there was always a fight.
Yeah, if you, if you look at, um, where other places have done bed and breakfast stuff, they tend to be sort of grouped and sort of, I mean, what I've seen anyway, like I was in Ithaca last summer, and they were kind of all along sort of the same street or two. And they're very nice, you know, but-
So that's-
I wonder if that's, you know, if that's about sort of putting them in a district or something. I don't, I don't know, but-
It would be good to find out if there's organizations that support people doing that, that teach you how to, how to do it, or-
Oh, I'm sure there are, yeah.
Well, we had one down on the corner of Blanchard and Kent Street. There was a little bed and breakfast there, so that all went to wherever.
Isn't that what the one that's falling apart on Driftway is?
It was very nice.
Uh, yeah, is that Blanchard and Kent? Yeah, that needs a little rehab at the moment.
Well, you know, one thing I thought about-
That should be coming up.
Right, not to mention a rebranding.
Well, speaking of Uber and the new technology, you know, Airbnb is like huge. It'd be interesting to know how many people in Situate have Airbnb right now. Like, are there any places that are renting out from that?
Look that up, too.
Yeah, you could look it up. And that would be to start out, anyway. It'd be curious to see, like, do we have a lot, especially during the summer? Is there a lot of that? I don't, I don't know.
But if you're going to encourage sort of the development of a, of a hotel, or maybe even, we've got the little one in the harbor, right? Ian or whatever. And, you know, the question is how much, you know, how much demand is there for hotel rooms over a period of time that could sustain a business, right? And that's, that's really the problem with a lot of these things is that, you know, they really dig a big hole in January and February and March, and even April. You know, they're underwater and they got to recover everything during the summertime, basically.
You know what would be interesting to find out is Kimball's over in Cohasset Harbor. You know, that's larger by about three times than the one in Situate Harbor. And they've, they've been there for a long time now, so I guess they're financially viable. And there's not any more, in fact, there's less in Cohasset right around that location than there would be around a hotel near Situate Harbor, it seems to me.
But they have the ability to have weddings.
Right, so maybe that's the key. That's what I'm saying. You look at that and find out what's the, what's the key to that.
The key is functions.
Yeah, I was going to say, back to the-
That's where Atlantica makes its money.
Yeah, the Widows Walk and the thing that was proposed, just sort of a hotel slash conference center. Where you would have weddings.
We'll run a special for weddings for the weekend.
Weekend weddings on Green Bush Line.
No, but I, I think-
Come down on the Green Bush.
I, I think the-
We'll have the horse and carriage sitting there.
Married on the way down.
So the Barker- Barker could conceivably support weddings. The River Club can conceivably-
Barker does a lot of weddings.
Yeah, Barker does a lot of weddings.
So, you know, it's not like there's no, there's zero opportunity to think about that.
One of the issues, I think, it's not really an issue. One of the pluses about Widows Walk is the view. The view is just uncomparable, all right? We were supposed to, when that, when Widows Walk was permitted back in 95, it was supposed to be three years later, construction started on a function hall. It never happened. The debt's paid off in 17. Do we, if we had a function hall there, conference, whatever, not necess, may or may not be part of a hotel, you want to get rid of nine holes. Once upon a time, it was supposed to be nine holes there and nine holes at Situate Country Club, but that went south. So a function hall is going to draw people in. It's not going to take away from the Barker or anybody else because, and the view is just to die for.
Or a conference center.
Or a conference center.
Well, I think, I think, I think we're all supportive of trying to figure out something that can be done.
I do have one quick question. Like, when we talk about the RFP, would that also include the land that was going to be that education center? Because that's owned by the, the town, right?
It could, yes, it could.
I mean, I think those are all like kind of fine tuning things, but, okay. Yeah. So trails and bike paths, you know, that, this is kind of a repeat of that other one. One of these is publishing a map showing where the, the trails and the bike paths are.
Add that all into the marketing plan.
I have a question about this, and I'm just going to throw it out to the, the board. You know, the Norris Reservation, I know, is, is controlled by the trustees of the reservation, which they get a lot of private money, but it's so well marked, it's so beautifully done. It's, it's, everything about it is just nicely maintained. Like, the area that's, I believe that they call the Conservation, that's, um, what's the official name across from Widows Walk, the park?
Is that the AJ McCaughran?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And part of it's just called Conservation Park.
Park? Would there ever be any thought or, like, actually deeding that over to, like, the trustees of the reservation?
They don't want just any land. I mean, you have to-
Really go through a process?
You have to really go through a lot of process to, to have that.
They would take it back to Congress.
Okay.
Or at least the legislature.
That is pretty special. It really is.
The town probably wouldn't want to give it up, but-
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Should they be doing more to manage it? Yeah, probably.
I'm just saying, when you could-
I think it's a dog park there, basically.
When you compare the two, because I used to walk the dog when we had the Beagle. I would go to both places a lot. And then you look at the difference, and you can see that the one, the Norris, is, is maintained so much better. And so, like, the, the trails are marked so nicely and-
It's probably because they have some maintenance program for it.
They have money.
Usually, the trustees don't want to take land that they can't get some kind of maintenance program for, you know, so. It's, it's a challenging thing.
Did you know that the, and I'm sure you did, that that big field, that's there, that's a regulation soccer field?
The one by, by Driftway?
Yep.
I thought it was just a dog run.
Nope, it's a regulation soccer field.
It's a regulation dog run.
Can't do both.
But anyway, I do think that having, yeah, having signage and stuff, it is important. I don't know how, in the priority of things.
But it's all, I mean, the Conservation Commission manages it, and not well. That's another-
I mean, even things like picnic tables. I mean, there are those concrete tables that are, they look terribly uncomfortable. Does anyone, have, have you ever seen anyone have a picnic up there on those tables? I never have seen anyone.
Okay, beach and water, this segues very nicely into beach and water access. So I think I put it on once that I distributed that there is actually a pilot program going on right now for daily beach passes. There are also weekly passes for renters. There's some new things that are being done with the beach passes that weren't, with the beach access that weren't being done before. So, so as far as exploring these opportunities, I think that is something, instead of short term, I think that you just say ongoing.
I think it's fine. I think, you know, somebody's obviously got to deal with the parking issue, right? So got to figure out how to manage it.
Yeah. And then we've got the water-based recreation, which you were all talking about before, about kayaks and so on and so forth. The feasibility of hosting larger regional sports tournaments. I was wondering if we really have a location for that and about the traffic for that, that-
We don't really have facilities. And on top of that, we would be competing with the, you know, some of those facilities that could build, like the, the old Starland that, you know, is an enormous sports facility right now, right?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what kind of tournaments we'd have. Maybe lacrosse or soccer or something? We don't even have enough fields for that.
Not as strong.
Yeah.
Olympic sailing?
I was going to say that. One opportunity is that we've had over the years a few national championships in various classes of sailboat.
Is that right?
Were hosted here.
Yeah, he was right out of the harbor and bang, here.
We had a dog show here.
I think we had the National Opti Championship at one point. I know we had the National Mercury Championship more than once.
Wow, heard all those people staying who came here.
I don't know. I think, I think with other boaters. Probably bunked in with other boaters.
Okay, a bike share program.
Sailors asleep anywhere.
You know, I mean, I think if there was just a bike rental, that would probably be a-
That was kind of my note, is that why not, if it's feasible, why not have somebody do a bike rental program, you know?
Okay. Okay, the next group has to do with kind of arts and culture.
I like this idea about open, you know, dead space, rental dead space of doing these pop-up galleries and stuff. I've seen that work in other places.
Yeah, they did that in downtown Crossing for a while.
I saw it in Jacksonville, Florida. They did that in a number of places. It's kind of cool, you know? It, it's a way to, it's a way to make the, you know, sort of take away the eyesore of an empty space, you know?
Yeah.
Be challenged to maybe find somebody who would use it, you know, but, but in, in the place I saw in Jacksonville, they were, they were actually exhibiting art. You know, they'd have art exhibits and do some other things with it, you know?
Great.
It looked a little more lively.
Yeah, yeah, lively is good. So, uh, marketing, um, different areas to artists and crafters. I mean, I think, yeah, that's very similar to the-
North Situate Farmers Market no longer exists. It's now the Harbor Farmers Market.
And I would actually, you know, if you want, if we really want to do a Farmers Market, I would do it. I would look at it up at the Green Bush area myself. Because there's a lot more to park there.
Yep.
And you could create a permanent structure for a Farmers Market of some kind.
Where, where would you do that?
Up in Green Bush somewhere.
Okay.
I mean, there's enough land. There must be a way to figure it out.
But at the same time, I must say-
It can be a big draw.
I know, and I totally agree that the Farmers Market took away from North Situate, but we've now gone to the one in the harbor several times, and it's nice. We'll walk around there and then we'll walk down, we'll stroll down Front Street and go to, go to the restaurant or something. So it, it is nice that it's there, I must say.
I'm not, I did not mean that as a negative. It's just that they pulled out, for whatever reason, decided they'd have more traffic in the harbor, and they were absolutely correct. And it seems to me that the couple of years that they were in North Situate, every single Wednesday, it rained.
Not much to do about that.
The Mass Cultural District for Situate Harbor, that application is actually underway already. So doesn't really need any, anything further there. The annual Situate Open Studios event, I mean, that sounded interesting. I think it's something the Arts Association would have to decide if they wanted.
You know-
The Art Master Plan, I thought that was potentially pretty interesting to try to find locations for, I don't know, sculpture or something. And maybe to, to add some landscaping as part of that. Maybe just a kind of public spaces master plan.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, give it to the Arts Association.
Well, and again, I think the two train stations would be potential as well. I've seen that in other communities where they've done some things like that. Even like plantings and, and art, it made it a little bit more interesting.
Yeah. Get the MTA to-
Well, I guess, that was my point, is I've seen it done at other stations, so they must have something in place to allow that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. In, in Boston, you see all the time about how they're, they're putting some new art installation on.
But I guess even up on the North Shore, I remember Beverly had some things, and I think it was Rockport, and some of those other communities that are similar to ours had their stations have some really cool things around it.
Yeah, just do the cows like they did in Chicago.
Yeah, well, they did that, they did the cod, you know, in Boston.
Um, so the MTA service for weekends, we already talked about that. Maritime industry jobs. There were a whole bunch here that had to do with that. Having, having some kind of special group convened to look at opportunities in Situate for maritime education. I mean, of course, that was tried, it didn't really seem to work, but I think, you know, maybe it was just the wrong proposal at the wrong time. Working with NOAA-
We could have the first national sea level rise.
Uh, yeah. So-
We could go to Boardwalk and charge them to watch it happen.
You're in charge now. We're putting you in charge. That's a brilliant idea.
Okay, so we, we like, we like all this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, if we can make, if we can tie it into, you know, marine research instead, that'd be great.
Well, and even, I guess, because back to also marketing and stuff, like, I've been up to that, the, the NOAA facility or the, the Stellwagen Bank facility several times. I always been scared to like walk in. I was like, what do they do here? Because it's so private.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's no signs or anything, and it doesn't look like a public building.
They don't do a lot of public outreach, which is a shame. It really is. There's a proposal, by the way, to take the old boathouse, the Coast Guard Boathouse on the harbor, and to make that a dormitory for a summer internship program. So that's for NOAA.
For NOAA, yeah?
Yep.
Wow.
So that, I think that's likely to happen. They've got plans pretty far advanced.
That's great.
Oh, that would be cool.
That would be a neat site for some kind of a maritime museum if NOAA ever wanted to give it up, you know?
Yeah, but, yeah, but they won't.
Sorry, we want a function.
Why would they want to do that?
I'd rather have a function as a research center itself.
I would, too. I'd, I'd rather intensify and enrich the research use.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to see if you could ever find any other sites on First Cliff to kind of go along with that.
Yeah.
You know, speaking of the government, I think at one point you had said that maybe the, is it the Navy or the Air Force that has the, the, on Fourth Cliff?
It's the Air Force.
It's the Air Force, okay. Would they ever, at one point, I think you mentioned that they might be interested in like giving, giving that to the town, or?
They, they're expanding it.
I don't think so.
The town was interested in getting it.
Maybe that was the thing.
Been interested in getting it for years, but whether they have a, like, a likely chance is a whole other thing.
Okay.
So, okay, growing the healthcare sector.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's that whole area sort of around the Driftway and, sorry? Well, I think it's that whole area sort of around the Driftway and, sorry?
Where the pot shops going to be?
There's the Harbor Medical Building.
Yeah, a whole bunch of medical buildings. So, I, I thought this was maybe a little bit, a little bit advanced for what's, what's actually there, but, you know, I'm curious what other people thought.
Well, over time, Situate's population is getting older and it's going to continue to get older.
Yeah.
So, in that sense, the market is there.
Yeah.
For this type of use. And it's, you know, it'll, it'll increase incrementally. But yes, every place around here.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, do we think that, that it needs some extra support from the town to make it happen or it's just going to kind of happen by itself?
Well, I would integrate it into the Green Bush sort of plan, right? I mean, that, I would integrate that, that concept into the Green Bush plan.
What would be interesting is to bring in, they just opened one in Abington on Route 18, a health stop type of thing.
Right, critical care center or walk-in, walk-in center, yeah.
They can do x-rays, they can do all that stuff. And actually, the, the original Driftway Medical Building, I think, I don't know if they took it out or not. They have an x-ray thing in the, in the basement and, you know, they're sort of all set up for that. And I think you're going to see more and more of those satellites cropping up.
Yeah, yeah, they have a bunch of them in.
There's one on Route 53 in Norwell.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay, increase awareness of Situate restaurants in off-season months. I mean, I think that's also kind of happening through the restaurant week. Maybe that doesn't have to be such a high priority. Okay, identifying sites suitable for restaurant development.
I think there has to be some concept in town about the capacity limit for restaurants in town. Because, you know, there's only a certain population that comes in and, and as I said during the, during the winter months, it's pretty lean for most of these places. And, you know, the more restaurants you develop, are you just spreading the sort of the, the same, you know, revenue over more and more facilities, you know?
I think though.
Making it more difficult for them to sort of cover their nut in the summertime.
But if you make a cluster, at some point, you've got sort of critical mass where people say, you know, as, let's say, to use Waltham as an example, on Moody Street. You know, you go there because there are a number of restaurants. And it's like, well, I'm not going to get into this one. I'll go to the next one or we don't have a plan. Let's just go to Moody Street.
Or I'm not sure if I want Indian or Thai or, you know, whatever.
Waltham's a big place. It's not the same as Situate, right?
I, I have to.
Completely different, I would say.
One of the back whenever, when Oro wanted to come to town, the local restaurants were beside themselves and, you know, they did not want them. And Oro is busy. Galley is busy. Reva's is packed. The, you know, after.
So, I, I say, I don't know if we need to go out of our way to identify suitable sites for restaurants.
If we had Sewer, if we had Sewer in North Situate, we could stand a real, you know, aside from Jamie's, a really good restaurant in North Situate.
And yeah, and if you had that, somebody would develop it, right?
If you had Sewer.
Somebody would be there.
You wouldn't have to go out and recruit.
You wouldn't have to recruit anybody. That's my point is that this is more about going at sort of outreach to get other sites developed for restaurants and.
And yet the Gull, whatever it is up on 3A, can't seem to stay in business. The one that was the old Chinese restaurant.
Oh, right.
That's a lousy spot.
It's hard to get in and out, yeah.
Yeah, and it just doesn't have any presence on the street. Right, you're looking down on the roof.
It's great for parking the pickup trucks.
In my opinion, I think it is one of the things that Situate has as a strength. And so, I don't know if I'd go out of my way to market, but I do think it's a good opportunity to continue building that, the success, build on the success that Situate already has in that particular area. Which gets to the next point about, you know, potentially, I think, was it next, the liquor licenses?
Yeah.
You know, I think that, that is something that, again, if the market demands it, that there should be, we should be receptive of that.
Okay, but I, I mean, I think this is.
Like going out.
Putting you, putting the town in a different kind of position than that. I mean, this is saying we should really go out and look for additional liquor licenses. I don't know if that's the case.
Well, instead of.
Have people asked for them and we haven't had them available?
That I don't know.
I think there are like two available, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but I think I heard that at one point.
So, this is all completely regulated by the state?
Liquor licenses, yeah.
And, and it's limited. It's not just regulated, it's limited, like you only get.
Yeah, it's kind of go through a big process to get more.
It's based on population, yeah. But I think they did make changes recently where home rule petition or whatever, where the cities could go to the state and say, we would like additional licenses.
Yeah, I think they, they need a lot of, you know, they need action by the state legislature or something, I mean, or the alcoholic licensing board or, you know, alcoholic beverage commission. So, I'm not sure what's involved with that. But I guess what you're saying is that this is a strength, but in terms of actually actively going out recruiting more restaurants, maybe there are other priorities that are, that are more important than that.
Well, here's what I would say is that, I don't know who would actually go recruit per se.
Well, that's what this is saying. Somebody would do.
Right. But I think we should make it in, in the town as far as the permitting and the, the environment as easy as possible. If some person, Person X, would like to open up a new restaurant on Front Street, as Ann mentioned, we should make it as easy as possible and not put roadblocks in front of it. That's all.
I don't think they have. I just, I don't, I can't see that we have, so I don't.
I think there has been.
Yes.
You think so?
Oh, you have no idea.
The last few we've seen in here. I haven't seen any roadblocks.
With the grease traps and things like that?
No, 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 no.
I mean, they still got to meet all the public health requirements.
Right, but when.
That's why I'm asking.
Oro wanted to come to town. We had the restaurants from TK O'Malley's, the Mill Wharf, and they had been at each other's throats prior to this. Even Reva's, we don't, you know, there's not enough business. We can't support this.
But I mean, did anybody listen to that on the town side? Because that's really just kind of opinion.
No, it was.
It's like it all got permitted, right?
It did eventually, but it was contentious.
Well, that's, that happens.
Yeah, contentious.
And then it worked out beautifully.
Yeah, okay, so I think we're, right, yes, we are. We should be patting ourselves on the back.
Well, I guess, getting back to my, it's a strength that we have. We should continue to build on that strength, whatever that means.
Great. The lodging tax, I don't know how you, you encourage hotel development and so on with, with the lodging tax like immediately going in place. I mean, I just.
There's only 21 hotel rooms in the whole town.
We're not going to make much money on that. It'd be better to have like a payment lieu taxes agreement with the resort developer.
Yeah, no kidding. We should be giving incentives as opposed to exacting penalties.
Beach passes, I think we, we pretty much just talked about. Having some kind of eating or, or retail establishment at the beach. Maybe like a little car.
They're doing that.
They are doing that, okay.
There's a hot dog cart there.
Use of Situate Harbor Community Building. I think there's.
Let's sell that and make that the farmer's market.
Not a bad idea.
Sell what? Excuse me?
Pier 44.
I think you have to put a 40, high-rise hotel unit.
Well, I mean, I think the thing is having to elevate the building.
I think it ought to be the senior center.
The problem is, is everyone wants something different and it's sort of like.
It's going to be fascinating to see what happens if the Catholic Church is able to evict the people up at St. Francis. Because that's supposed to be next, in the next week or two.
Yeah.
That they're supposed to be booted.
What, are they going to occupy Pier 44?
No.
That parcel is going to go on the block.
Occupy Pier 44. It would be interesting to see what transpires. I do know they have another appeal. But they have that school, St. Francis School, that has a gym and a cafeteria and the whole bit that would actually, with tremendous amount of parking, there's your senior center.
I think it's too small.
But how expensive would that be?
We should not buy another building in this town.
Wow, I'm just.
Right, so I, I mean.
What, and just to summarize, what is the final, I, I know that there was lots and lots discussed about Pier 44, but the last I heard was sort of they were, didn't really come to any particular conclusions of what it was going to be, other than the fact that it was.
The library.
Yeah, that, right. But I mean, even long-term saying this should be X.
They haven't figured it out yet.
They're really, exactly. It's sort of in limbo.
But they can't sell it either. Because if they do sell it, then they have to turn around and purchase something to replicate.
I don't think selling it's the.
They also got to return the money.
Or give the money back to the M B T A.
Okay, so we're going to keep considering different uses for the Situate Harbor Community Building.
We don't need to maintain it.
Okay, so I don't think using it as a parking lot for off-site Situate Harbor employees or, or boaters is necessarily.
A good idea.
Hot Dog Stand, Hamburger Stand on one end of it.
Well, actually, that was, that's the next thing.
There you go, clam shack, yeah.
Would make it very nice. And, and nice as a senior center.
Situate Tavern is not going to like that.
No.
Well, no, that's true.
Nor will some of the other places either, right?
What could you do that could be, you know, different from what they serve at Situate Tavern?
You know, drinks with umbrellas.
Well, Bill has a, has a good point because I've talked to a number of people about just the restaurants and they were, the one thing I've heard is just the variety of ethnicity. You can't really get any ethnic food per se in Situate.
But I mean, the problem is push cart.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, maybe coordinate with, with the taverns so that you could, you know, bring your pizza over or maybe have the tavern selling pizza by the water or whatever.
That's not a bad idea.
It seems to me they did permit, give a hocka peddles license to us, I don't know if it was hot dog or what, down by, between, was it Pier 44 and the Boat Club last summer?
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the launch ramp there.
Yes.
But they've had, they've had them in the harbor, right in Cole Parkway, right there by the Bancino.
Yeah.
So, they've had them there. They've had them over the Lighthouse.
Lighthouse, they've had, they had burgers and hot dogs.
Down in Tomahawk and there was a big kerfuffle with sands and cafe over there.
What's the one that does lemonade?
Uh, Dell's.
Dell's, they, they were there for a while.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're good. Okay, well, thank you very much. That is very helpful.
Lots of good ideas.
So, yeah, really.
So, what are you going to do? Formalize and that, here's what, plenty of words, thanks?
Yeah. I promise I won't twist the whole thing.
She just wants you to sign it on the very.
You know what, it has to write it all down.
It's funny because we do this sometimes with like requirements for software development. So, we say to our customers, like, if you only had a hundred dollars and each thing was like, you know, say five dollars or 10 dollars, you know, what would you go for? I don't know. I still think like what I think Steve mentioned is that getting the R F P for Widows Walk is something that could really be a catalyst for a lot of things happening. That's my opinion.
But you'd have to make some fairly major decisions upfront. I mean, is, is it going, is it going to be predicated on Widows Walk being reduced to nine holes?
Well, I think that's part of the, the first step, which is to evaluate the opportunities.
I agree, yes.
And then develop an R F P based on that evaluation.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I think that whole process is a great process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree with you. You gotta, you've got to sort of frame it for people.
Yeah.
And in some ways, what you might need is you're going to need people who are in that kind of development business to give you ID, tell you what you don't know, right?
Yeah, what's working. One thing that I've always thought is, is why is the dump there? I mean, it's a transfer station. It's tractor-trailer trucks and containers.
Right.
I mean, that chunk of land, even with the, the tower out back and the, and the solar field and all that, the capped landfill, I mean, that is a chunk of land in this area that we're talking about. And, you know, dumps are, you know, not real revenue generators other than, so I mean, is. I always thought, is there somewhere else we can put that?
Nobody wants to move anywhere else.
Well, I, I agree that, you know.
What if, you know, the town went to curbside?
It's been there.
Oh.
No transfer station anymore.
They could.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been any many towns.
It used to be. There used to be the dump out in the west end, out the way far end of Clap Road.
And then one on Stockbridge Road.
And one on Stockbridge Road. And one of the main reasons that we purchased Boston Sand and Gravel was to put in the trend of the Newtown dump. And we built a slurry trench to ensure that the water supply was, was protected. It was all part of the planned development district.
But that was then?
That, I understand that that was then and this is now. The cap landfill has all the solar array on it. Someday, maybe you can put something else on it, once it finally settles.
20 years, yeah.
What, whatever. As far as the rest of it is concerned, if you can take the tractor-trailers and the compressors, compacters and what have you, where else would you put it?
I'd, I'd, I'd look into the, the economic feasibility going curbside. Why do we need a transfer station at all?
We looked into doing curbside a long time ago, looked at B F I out of Marshfield to do it. And it was the first year or two, it was, you know, relatively inexpensive, they thought. And then suddenly realized that, you know, once that first contract is up and you're so used to doing it, it goes through the roof. But it's, you know.
I'd have, I'd have to see it on, on paper. And I'm, you know, you, you very well could be right.
No, this was 20 years ago. This is before, we used to have garbage pickup in this town.
Oh, I know. I was, I was there.
Right. And then the legal women voters, along with the Situate Alliance, flow a taxation called every single person in this town to ask them what they did with their garbage.
And what, what, what kind of answers do?
Oh, you have no idea. But when all was said and done.
I know what I do with mine.
The biggest concern to, to co-mingle it and put it in the dump was that the individual who ran after the back of the truck was going to lose his job. That was huge.
Hopefully, we've moved beyond that.
But these are the things that.
There aren't any individuals now doing that, right?
Uh, not in Situate.
You know, there are a lot of different companies doing it now. It's not just B F I.
Right.
Because where I live in Weymouth, they do it and you have the standard garbage cans. It's really quite efficient.
They do it in Norwell. Yeah.
But that's, that's the case all over the Commonwealth. It's, it's not, it's not unique because, you know, everything is getting shipped out of state now, right?
How many hundreds a year?
There really aren't that many landfills left in the Commonwealth right now.
I'd pay that in a heartbeat. I'd pay, I'd pay more of that for dump bags. Hundred bucks a year.
I think we pay like 114 a quarter or something like that or 130.
There's a great idea. We'll bring all of our trash to Norris.
But I do think it's, and also, I'm sure everyone's probably in the same situation where, over the last five years, we used to have like this much trash and this much recycling. Now, it's completely reversed where I have all this recycle and very little trash.
Yep.
I think a lot of people are like that. Where, why shouldn't it be just pick up?
Yeah, I mean, different discussion for a different day, but the fact is that land, that recycling center is a wonderful piece of land in terms of location. And it's terribly underutilized for, for doing what it's doing.
Now.
Particularly since, you know, the landfill's been capped and, you know, that, that was part of why it was there.
Right, right, right.
But I thought, and I don't, I'll have to investigate, not that it matters here, but last year, the dump sticker or transfer station sticker was 75 dollars and now.
It's 85.
Now it's 85. And I thought that they were, because the transfer station is actually not necessarily making money, but it's not losing money. And that it was going, they were going to, because of overrides, et cetera, et cetera, they were going to back it down to 65 dollars. And now it's 85?
I think it is, yes, the new ones.
What happened?
Unless, unless you're over 70.
I haven't hit there yet.
The cost to transport trash is getting more and more expensive and not just, and not locally, I'm saying, within the state.
We don't do sea mass anymore?
It's, all of it's starting to dry up. And that's, you know, that's a universal problem, not just in Massachusetts too. But in, in particular Massachusetts, many of the landfills have already been capped, you know, so there's fewer and fewer landfills available. And so, that's going to drive the price. I mean, if you want private waste hauling, it's 120 bucks a quarter, right? So.
Something to think about.
So. It was private before and ended up they'd come down, back down my driveway and then take whatever I had. Now, what happens is I have to bring it all the way down the end of my driveway. My, my argument is by the time I do that, I might as well go to the landfill.
So, on these, the next steps with the recommendations, with the, this board and, and the other board, potentially the other boards are going to kind of weigh in on this and then it's up to the E D C to kind of move it forward or?
Are, are doing, but this is going to the selectmen, Tricia. And I think they want to be kind of driving the bus, at least part-time driving, you know, in some way driving the bus.
And then it kind of comes back to the E D C to sort of then move this forward? Is that where we?
I assume so.
Okay.
Next, we get a motion to minutes?
Well, yeah, I think we have minutes.
It ended up they never sent us the, the updated set of drawings.
No, we did that while you were gone.
So, we, we just gave them an approval and trust them to do it right.
Hope you like it.
All right, I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for January 22nd, 2015, as well as the Situate Planning Board minutes for February 12th, 2015.
All of the favor?
Aye.
That would be nice, thank you.
Okay, I move we. Okay, I move we pay WB Mason for $140.86 for office supplies, file folders, labels, et cetera.
Type writer ribbons.
No, there's no typewriter ribbons on this one.
They sneak them in there.
We have a type.
Do I have a second?
We're out of it.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a real quick report on 40R. We did get the grant for the design guidelines, which is great. But before we get into that, I think the sewer capacity and water capacity needs to be explored and kind of pinned down. So, I believe it's next Tuesday, the Economic Development Consultant and I are going to meet with Kevin Cafferty and try to shake out what's the best we could do as far as getting some kind of a certification of the sewer capacity.
So, it's confirmed that for 40R, they need a written certification that this much capacity is available for the 40R district?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be a challenge.
I have a question on the sewer capacity. I know that they have a plan for infiltration and to improve that going forward. Is there sort of a 10- or 20-year plan to expand the plant at any point?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. That's one of the things we're going to be finding out from Kevin.
Okay.
Do you know? I mean, maybe you know.
Intuitively, it doesn't make sense to expand where it is. Everything's a home run.
A home run being?
You could have a satellite plant that would, just in the closet.
Somewhere else?
Yeah. Like North Situate.
Supposed to be up in the Glades.
Like the Rotten Gun Club.
Well, because I think that, and just as a general statement, as we talk about all these economic things, I mean, that's sort of like the crux of it, if it all comes down to that. We can talk about all these wonderful economic things and developing 3A and North Situate, but if we don't have the infrastructure in place, it's, none of it's going to go anywhere. So, is there a plan somehow to even pay for that, like whether it's through, you know, I mean, this is a stupid, crazy thing, but take the hotel tax and put it toward a sewer fee or something, you know, I don't know, some plan.
Well, if there isn't a plan, I mean, there can be a plan.
Right.
A plan can be developed to, you know, look at these things and to come up with some kind of reasonable options.
Right.
But haven't they already done that?
For expansion, I don't believe so.
So, there's a finite limit that the long-term plan is expecting to hit at some point?
Yeah, and it sounds like we're getting very close to it from, you know, my conversation with Kevin, but I just want to kind of go over it again and get more of the detail.
Well, one of the things I think that's kind of missing on this is that I'm surprised there wasn't like a plan, like, you know, we have a plan like to say, hey, what are all the vacant parcels in Situate, to evaluate it? Like, there should be some plan to sort of evaluate our infrastructure in the case of like sewer. What do we have? What is the limit? And are we going to be in five years or 10 years running up against the same situation? Or will we have to expand, or, you know, what's the...
Well, it's going to be hard to put a, you know, 100-room hotel or something.
Exactly, exactly, it all comes down to this.
Or anything up at Green Bush and, you know, all that, if you don't have the capacity for it, so. I would hope somebody's got some kind of infrastructure plan.
It even, in a way, I mean, not that the 40R kind of got derailed for many other reasons, but that was one of the big issues with the 40R was, you know, could the sewer commissioners, the Board of Selectmen, sign off on this potential of number of units based on our capacity?
Well, I think you're right in terms of economic development. If you don't have infrastructure capacity, then you're sort of out of luck as far as economic development goes.
One thing that came up when Toll Brothers was talking about their development, and